Evening folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael, I sent you an email. I don't know if you saw it, but like a lot of folks, the power's been flickering and went off and came back on. So if I happen to disappear, you know why?
Yes, that's, we completely understand.
Actually, all day long, that's been happening.
There was a massive tree that fell over at the cemetery blocking Sneeve. So a lot of rolling wood is backed up too.
And we did, we did have a tree fall on a house in San Bruno today. I don't, I don't know the address, but you know, fortunately, no one was hurt, but it did a lot of damage to the house.
Well, there was also a fire up at Sweeney Ridge. Hmm. Very top. I walk, my house looks directly over Sweeney Ridge and there was emergency crews and fire trucks going out. In fact, just a few minutes ago, the last trucks left.
Wow, wow.
Thank goodness that it was, um, it wasn't, it wasn't damaged to, to any homes or there aren't any homes nearby. But it didn't, it didn't take off. That's the good news.
Yeah, that's good.
And the winds were horrendous.
Yeah, yeah.
It looks like everyone's here. Should we get going?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for, for all being here. And so we'll get, go ahead and get started.
All right. Good evening. Want to thank everyone for attending the planning commission meeting. Quake mission will continue to hold its meetings remotely, except starting next month, we are going to come in person, I believe. Please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for the item on the agenda, please raise your hand using the button in Zoom. Or you want to speak, you can dial star nine. And you will be unmuted by staff, given the opportunity to speak. We've given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in attendance may only speak one time per agenda item. And if we could take a roll call, please, for attendance.
Of course. Chair Madden.
Here.
Vice Chair Durazo.
Here.
Commissioner BSOP.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coon.
Here.
Commissioner Lethen.
Here.
Seven present, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Commissioner Lethen, would you like to lead us to that?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Thank you. Sorry. Everybody's gone at the same time.
Thank you.
Good, good policy to mute if you're not the person who's leading.
All right. So next on the item is, uh, next agenda item is approval of minutes for the February seventh special meeting. Does anyone want to make a motion? Or have changes?
I move that we accept the minutes. Uh, February seventh. Oh, actually. I need to recuse myself from that. I was not at that meeting. So I take that back.
I, I will move to approve the minutes from February seventh. I will second that.
All right, great. Could you get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Madden.
Hi.
Vice Chair Durazo.
Hi.
Commissioner BSOP.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Coon.
I.
Commissioner Lethen.
I.
Seven zero motion passes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next on the item or on the agenda item is, uh, number five, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any comments from the public? For items not on the agenda. If so, please raise your hand using the button in Zoom or dial star nine if you're on phone.
No hands raised, chair.
Okay, uh, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is any announcements for conflicts of interest for tonight's, uh, agenda items from the commission? Not seeing any hands or guesses, so I take it there are none. Um, okay, moving on, uh, item seven is the public hearing. Uh, proposed amendments, commercial cannabis regulations. To amend article three zoning of title twelve land use of the San Bruno Municipal Code by amending section twelve point three hundred point oh seventy limit commercial cannabis retail sales, storefront sales to the transit corridors, planned areas MXR, TOD one, TOD two, and PD zones. To reduce the number of commercial cannabis real estate, real retail sales permits from three to one. Allow a maximum of two cannabis distribution facilities in the M one zone and north of San Bruno Avenue and east of El Camino. And deleting section four point seven zero point zero seven zero. We have a presentation from staff on this?
Uh, yes, we do. Mr. Amaya will be presenting.
It's all yours.
Are you guys able to see it in full screen or is it still in?
I can see it.
Okay, great. So, good evening commissioners. I'm going to be Sir Amaya and I will be presenting the review of commercial cannabis regulations. So to start off this meeting, I'll give a brief overview on the agendas. We will start off the meeting with the objective, followed by the background on commercial cannabis regulations. I will also give some insight on the suspension of the operator's permit application period. And we move, we will move on to councils directed amendments and we will finish off the presentation with tonight's recommended action. Uh, like standard procedure at the end of the presentation, the floor will be open to the commission to ask any questions, then followed by the public. So the objective of this meeting is to review and discuss the proposed amendments to the city's commercial cannabis regulations. And I will kick off by giving some background. So the commercial cannabis regulation has, uh, pretty long history. It started off in twenty eighteen. Where council prohibited, uh, commercial cannabis uses, but two years later in twenty twenty, it was a ballot measure for cannabis tax and regulations and voters approved a ten percent tax measure. The next year in twenty twenty one, the city initiated a contract for commercial cannabis regulations. And in twenty twenty two, that's when, um, a lot of the things started to progress in cannabis regulations. So in February, there was a city council study session on the regulations. And later that year in September and October, council adopted the commercial cannabis regulations and the ordinances, number nineteen thirty and nineteen thirty one went into effect on November tenth. But early this year in January, there was a discussion on revising certain cannabis regulations at the January tenth meeting and at the January twenty fourth meeting, council introduced it and requested some amendments to the ordinance, which is why we are here today. So some brief overview on what was the adopted city cannabis regulations. To start, it was a maximum of four cannabis businesses. Retail was allowed with some limitations and distribution was allowed with some limitations as well. But the following were prohibited. So the city of San Bruno does not allow cultivation, manufacturing, testing and laboratories, cannabis mac, micro businesses, no temporary events for cannabis and no cafes for onsite consumption. So the overview on cannabis retailers. So cannabis retailer is also known as dispensaries. Is the sale of cannabis and cannabis products for adult use. And some limitations is it's restricted only to adults twenty one and over. It could also include some delivery services, no manufacturing was allowed and previous ordinance allowed maximum of three retailers and sorry, I, to correct myself, the current ordinance allows a maximum of three cannabis retailers. As for cannabis distribution facilities, it's the sale and transport of cannabis and cannabis products between state licensed cannabis businesses. So this could include storage of cannabis as well. So no manufacturing onsite is allowed. No retail sales are allowed and there's only maximum of one currently in our ordinance. So the state recommends the use of buffers from sensitive use and no cannabis businesses can be within six hundred feet of sensitive uses, which is city regulation and state recommendation. So what that means is sensitive uses includes youth centers, daycare centers, schools, parks, and public libraries. And we will be able to visualize this on the maps later in the slides. So this is our current cannabis map. Um, as you see here, you see the buffers of six hundred feet and the zones where cannabis retailers and cannabis distribution is permitted. To recap, a maximum four facilities are allowed. Retail is up to three, which was only permitted in the blue and yellow zones. So that's the CBD district, Tan Fran, TOD one, TOD two, um, some PD zones and, uh, MXR district. Distribution was only allowed up to one, and that is allowed in the M one district, visualized in purple. And once again, no cannabis facilities are allowed within those sensitive use buffers. So the adopted commercial cannabis process had five steps. The first was to file commercial cannabis operators permit. Second, city staff did some pre-screen applications and determined whether application passed or failed. Step three, city council reviewed and select an operator's permit at publicly noticed meeting. The fourth step was selected businesses must file a conditional use permit for planning commission and city council review in action. And the last step was city issuance of the operator's permit. Now, the operator's permit did have quite a bit of requirements and these are listed here. Um, including background check documentation, proof of capitalization, assigned or a notarized property owner consent forms, lease agreements. And, uh, since most cannabis facilities didn't know if they were going to be selected by council, we did allow for letter of intention to lose. Uh, we also required a business plan, labor and community benefits plan, neighborhood compatibility plan and order control plan, safety and hazardous material plan, security plan, and location and site plans. So a lot of requirements for the operator's permits. We will now move on to the suspension of the operator's permit application period. So the application for the commercial cannabis operators permit was due on January seventeenth. But based on January tenth council correction, application period was suspended because we were pending council's discussion. Following the January tenth meeting, staff sent out a letter to the interested parties list informing them about the suspension and we also updated our website. So no commercial cannabis operators permit were submitted because of the suspension of the application period. The, the application is set to reopen upon council's decision not to amend ordinances or the effective date of council adoption of amendment. Next step in this presentation is council's directed amendments. So this slide here illustrates what council is requesting, which is a maximum two total cannabis facilities. One is cr- commercial cannabis retail, which would only be allowed in the blue zones. So please note that Tan Fran and the CBD district, which is downtown, are supposed to be removed. Second is distribution, which is up to two. And this would only be permitted in the purple parcels, which is in the M one district. And again, no cannabis facilities will be permitted in sensitive use buffers. These buffers remain the same, which include, uh, the same parks, uh, schools and public libraries. And sorry, one more thing I forgot to note about this is, um, there is a possibility that cannabis retail um, is not selected. So there could just be cannabis distribution, which is why it states here that there's two total and forgot to clarify that. So tonight's recommended action is to review the proposed commercial cannabis regulations and make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh six recommending to the city council approval of the ordinance and ending the current commercial cannabis regulation. And I do want to note that every recommendation you guys do tonight and motion will go to city council and on that, we will schedule city council meetings to proceed with your recommendation with two subsequent public meetings. And that is it for presentation and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Let's see, uh, Commissioner Harmon, go for it.
Yeah, could we clarify? So the, the version of the ordinance that allowed, uh, three retail and one distribution, that was fully adopted already. And so this is a revision that yeah, my, my, my recollection and staff can confirm is that whatever it was six months ago that they were considering adopting the ordinance that had the version of four, we had a hearing. And at the time, we not only recommended they adopt that version, we recommended adding a couple of locations to make it a little more permissive. Um, my position on that hasn't changed. I don't, I mean, like, uh, that's, you know, I, the hookah lounge is barely outside one of these sensitive use areas. There is a liquor store inside one of the sensitive youths, use areas. These businesses are more regulated and more locked down than a hookah lounge or a liquor store. I don't understand the concern with having it. Um, it's also just mildly ironic that you wouldn't be able to buy CBD in the CBD, but that's just neither here or there. Uh, yeah, I, I, I will not vote for this resolution. Frankly, uh, I would vote to simply send them the resolution we sent them last time.
Thank you, Commissioner Harmon. Uh, Commissioner Coon, go for it.
Um, I, I got a couple of base. Um, can you define what is a cannabis micro business? This is for my edification.
This is, this is typically a, um, a sole proprietor. So they actually, um, you know, basically grow, growth, they kind of do the entire cycle, but they're, they're just a small business. So, um, they you know, they, they grow, I think they grow their own. And then they, you know, process it and sell it, but it's a very small quantity.
This would, so that means growing onsite. And that's why it's not.
Yeah, okay. I believe, I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, and, and Michael, since I have you. So, and I had asked you by email, um, the why, why is this coming to us? Um, and I'll share with everyone. You told me it's probably related. It's probably because we had a change in council members. Um, before they were pro and now we have a change in hands and now they're against. I, I still didn't get a why. What, what is the detriment? Why, what's the discussion that they had? That they think this is, um, bad. And so they're making it more restrictive. Can you, can you shed some light on that?
Uh, sure. I believe, you know, the, during the council discussions, um, at least when they, uh, when the ordinance was adopted, there were, uh, you know, two council members that, you know, expressed concerns about, um, you know, the number and, uh, just the concerns with the overall, the business and they, um, you know, the concern with cannabis as a, as a substance and its potential, you know, for addiction and so forth. Um, and so, but there was also a sentiment, which I believe, um, the, the council, uh, is now going back to, which was, you know, s- starting small. So even the, the two council members that were opposed didn't, you know, didn't seem to be opposed to, to the level where you know, they wouldn't allow a cannabis business. They just were more interested in starting slow and you know, perhaps having, having one, you know, one retail establishment and see how it goes. Cause the ordinance can be amended at any time to increase the number. Um, and you know, and also the types of, of businesses, um, as well. So I think that um, is the primary sentiment of the current, um, the current city council is to start is to basically start with one, um, retail and one, uh, distribution or two distribution and no retail. So depending on the types of applications that are received.
And, and it doesn't sound like there's anything really backing that up. It's, it's their, um, feelings about about cannabis, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Christopher Coon, uh, Commissioner Harmon.
Would it? Oh, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Um, given that we are going to have a discretionary process on approving these at all as compared to alcohol or tobacco, which are ministerial currently. If the ordinance says that only one retail operation is permitted, once one is permitted, the barrier to adding another one will be that not only do you have to apply and get a discretionary permit, you actually have to change the ordinance and we have to have another hearing like this and so on. So you, you know, they just, it seems the, the version of the ordinance that exists, they could approve one, wait to see how it works and then approve another one from the applicant pool later. It does not, I mean, it just, it seems honestly disingenuous to say that in order to start small, we have to amend the current ordinance to only allow one, because we can already just vote for one.
Yes, and, and that is, that is correct. The, um, operators permit process, which is the first step. Uh, the, the language in the ordinances is very clear that the, um, city council has the ability to select, um, you know, one or more operators or select none from the pool that's, uh, provided. Um, yes, so that's, that is true.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, anyone else on the council with questions, comments?
Yes, Senator Commission.
Bishop BSOP.
So Michael, I have a question. So we're looking at reducing the retail to one location and the wholesale basically, or whatever you want to call that part to two, instead of what we had was one before. Is that correct?
So it, so it's either or. So it's, it's a maximum of two. So it could be so retailer distribution or, uh, to distribution, um, with no retail.
Okay, why the, why the thought of increasing the, uh, distribution part of it? And it's, I don't know, it just seems kind of odd.
I think that the, again, the, the city council was more concerned about the retail aspect, um, of of cannabis than the distribution.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Lethen.
Yeah, um, I'm also curious about the locations, the change in location. Um, as I was thinking about it with myself, um, it, it, it seems clear that Tan Fran is going to be redeveloped and likely will not end up being a place where it would be, you know, a practical place to put a dispensary. Um, but downtown, I'm, I'm just, I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is what were the councils, uh, what did they express as far as their reasoning for, uh, eliminating the downtown area?
Um, and, and there were, um, and I believe that they, both the planning commission and at the city council hearings, there was, um, you know, uh, several, several people that did speak about, uh, concerns with, uh, downtown and, um, you know, how it would, um, relate to other family related businesses. Uh, the ice cream parlor, um, the swim school, um, and, and other businesses downtown. So it was, I think, um, just more of a, you know, just again, concern for, um, for families, uh, who are, who are frequenting downtown.
Did they, did they express any specific concerns about what might happen to a family that would walk by the, the dispensary? Like, would the children be harmed or would people be hurt in any way?
I, I don't think, I don't, uh, I, uh, I, I don't recall, there were no discussions like that, specific discussions like that at the, at the council meeting last fall. Um, that, um, the, the recent, the more recent, uh, discussions, I know LSao has, um, has, I, I, I was not in attendance at the, um, January tenth or the twenty fourth meeting, but, um, LSao, I think might have uh, listened to the conversations. I will say, had I think to add.
They didn't have any discussion, um, specifically about your concern on what would happen if families walk by these businesses. They just mentioned that they wanted to remove, um, downtown and ten brand. And they just, they didn't go in depth really on the why.
Well, thank you. I, I don't want to put your feet to the fire, but I think I asked more, um, if there, there was something I was overlooking, because it doesn't seem to me to be a harmful or inappropriate place to have a dispensary in our downtown. Um, personally, I think it could actually increase foot traffic and bring people to our restaurants and to our markets and other really wonderful things we have going on in downtown. Um, and I know we talked about that in our previous meeting, that it could be a benefit toward downtown businesses. Um, I just didn't know if there was a new topic, a new concern. Okay.
Commissioner Harmon.
Really quickly, in the background, I've been looking it up. It looks like it was our August sixteenth meeting was the one where we discussed it. And I, I have in my notes, the discussion of, uh, adding Bay Hill and, uh, uh, sorry, Bay Hill and, um, the crossing. Um, but in, in any case, I, I think that was the meeting. So that for, for reference, if we want to look at the old resolution, that's, looks like that's where it was. But in in any case, I I think that was the meeting, so that for for reference, if we want to look at the old resolution, that's, looks like that's where it was.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Johnson.
I I received a um request from a community member, let me read it. The uh neighbor said, can a store be, can the store be a bistro with food, music, beverage, onsite consumption? Even though I know some of the answers, we've discussed that in the past, but I wanted for it to be a public response.
Uh, no, because I think that would be considered a cannabis cafe.
Yes.
And that's not permitted.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah, and I believe this was also discussed in the August. Yeah, planning commission meeting where you guys expressed your concern of onsite conception, and we made it pretty clear that customers would just go in walk through security, and then after that, purchase their cannabis product and exit the facility, quick in and out.
Thank you.
Christian Harmon.
Just to clarify that, that type of cannabis cafe is that that is theoretically allowable under the state rules, just it's not included in our ordinance, just to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
And and I apologize, I'm not clear, I noticed I did uh hear something on the news um recently that uh about uh making cannabis cafes more.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think that's what I heard, that it's proposed to make that type of Amsterdam cafe.
Yes, exactly, right, right, that was, yeah, the same thing to to do, similar to what they do i- in Amsterdam.
But even even if that became legal under state law, it is not included in the current ordinance as it stands regardless, but would not be allowed here.
That that's correct.
Any questions from commissioners, comments? Fisher Coon.
For starters, sorry about the bird in the background here. So I I've read through the text of the resolution and I'm just going to point out some things, it's sounding kind of hypocritical here that and I'll just read it verbatim, the allowance for cannabis sales or distribution in vacant buildings on El Camino will allow for new distinctive uses that will support existing commercial businesses along the corridor. Further down, stimulate reuse.
Commissioner Coon is frozen, I don't know if that's what the rest of you are seeing.
Yes.
Yeah, he froze for me too.
Um, let's give him a few seconds to see if he can restore. Um, okay, uh, it doesn't look like. He's back yet, give him another fifteen seconds and then we'll go back to more council questions and see if he comes back in time. Uh, maybe he's logging off and logging back on here. Uh, Michael, question for you, when whenever someone is reading off uh the uh you know, the agenda or the packet for audience members, is there a a the best way to state, like this is where I'm reading from, should we just say like the PDF number or is there a uh other way you'd recommend it, so just follow along?
Yeah, I think the PDF page number is the is the best.
Okay, great. All right, it looks like we got Commissioner Coon back, so Commissioner Coon, uh, go ahead, we lost you about ten seconds in.
Okay.
Just when you're reading it, just point out what page number of the PDF you're you're looking at, so uh anyone in the audience could follow along.
Oh, sure, um, I'm not, I'm not sure, actually, here we go, it on on the bottom, it's twelve of nineteen. Uh, the PDF page is not showing up, maybe it's just twelve.
I think tonight they happen to be the same, so that's great.
And and so, you know, it's LDU A, LDUC, LDU fifty-four, and then and then further along, it it does say the allowance of cannabis uses will provide for additional local jobs within San Bruno. Um, and this is something that was put together by staff, uh, that's the resolution. Everything here points towards cannabis being good, and yet the resolution is restrictive, so it's it's contradicting contradicting itself. I think you can get where I'm going with this.
Hey, great, uh, Commissioner Johnson, do you have a comment? Your hand is up.
No, that was a mistake, sorry.
Uh, anyone else from the commission? Okay, it does look like it, so I'll ask my questions now. Um, so uh for staff, uh, just so I'm totally clear, a yes vote result uh modifies the previous agreements of what we're seeing tonight. Does a no vote kill this provision or does it just send it back as is?
So, uh, what we would recommend is if you were to consider um you know, not recommending changing the ordinance, um, you you know, would would state your reasons uh for doing so, and those would be passed on to the the city council. So you, so you would make a motion you know, to approve the change and or make a recommendation to the city council to approve the change and adopt the resolution or uh make a motion in the negative to keep the the ordinance um as it is, and then stating uh your reason reasons for doing so.
Okay, so a no vote doesn't start the cannabis issue all the way back to point zero, it just kicks us back to the previous iteration that was approved by planning commission back in August, correct?
Correct, and then they, yeah, and then the rec- your recommendation will be passed on to city council. So, yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was, I was just, I think that thinking of it as a straight yes, no, isn't that, it's the question is, there there will be a motion to submit a resolution. And as as I said, I mean, my my position is that that uh, you know, we need to go through public comment and include, but at least my position at this time is I would like us to simply send them the text of the resolution we sent them in August. And say that this is what we voted for then, this is what we're voting for now. If you want to change it, you can change it, but that's not what we advised then, and it's not what we're advising now.
Mr. Beasadi.
Yeah, uh, a question for Michael, if can council do? Let me see if I can frame this correctly. I- is this a recommendation to council or can council take ours? If if we were to vote no, could council just go ahead and do what they wanted to do anyway, or do they need a re- recommendation for us, from us to go ahead and approve? Did that connect the dots?
They they can move forward uh regardless of uh what your recommendation is.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before I go back to my questions? No, okay, all right, next question, uh, did any um, I noticed like the purple section, the distribution section is uh I believe a lot of automotive shops, but there's also that one giant building that I believe used to be used for parking in SFO, like a parking company, and now it's kind of vacant. Was that large space uh discussed in particular, or that 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 uh um building site for some kind of massive dispensary? Did that come up at all?
Uh, no, that that site has been purchased by Amazon as a for a distribution center. So you uh, an application is forthcoming from them, uh, that might be before this, the planning commission by the end of this year. Um, or or early next year.
I say, is there not one of the applicants uh proposing to drone or drone weed across the city to everybody? No?
No.
All right, and then uh my last question, if I can remember it, I'm drawing a blank now, oh, uh uh apparently there were applicants uh based on uh Alessio's um presentation. Uh, was there a significant number of distribution versus retail or vice versa? Was there any impetus to that for some of these suggested changes? Uh, and do we know, or do you know how many applicants total there were?
Now, so so since the um, since the application period was never opened, we have no idea how many uh applications we were going to be receiving and and either for uh retail or for distribution. We do have um a substantial interest list, so LSAO, I think you had um I don't know how many people are on that list, but we have a number of of folks on that list, they did not uh uh necessarily kind of tilt their hand to to let us know, I know there were a couple of um of uses that um later found that had already leased some properties that uh had found out that they were actually in a sensitive use area. One, at least one downtown, um, and I think another site on El Camino Real. Uh, you know, so, uh, but we never, we never, since the application period never opened, we never we never knew, we just don't know um who was actually going to apply or how many people were going to apply.
Okay, I, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to add that our interested party list is around forty people. And throughout the application period, uh we were receiving a lot of emails and calls about uh the cannabis application, and we were helping about forty people um kickstart the application, trying to figure out whether they were in the sensitive use side or not. Certain questions about the five steps that we required, like the background checks, um the letter of intent form, but we never, like Michael said, we we didn't receive any actual any actual applications come in before January seventeenth. And that's partially due because of the suspension to the application period.
So, uh, am I understanding correct that basically between the time the council changed course, so to speak, I believe you said it was January tenth, thereabouts. The the applications were due a week later. But up until that point, we had not uh received any formal applications, so people these forty potential interested parties were seemingly waiting to the last second, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then uh maybe you could shed some light. Who chooses which applicant gets selected? If there, it seems it's going to be highly competitive. If there's forty interested parties say for, just for uh a scenario, fifty percent actually submit an application. So you have twenty people vying for four spots, now you're, they're vying for two spots. Is that, is this is not a first come applicant gets the gets the award, right? Because no one had seemingly submitted early to get first in queue, this is basically based on um a total you know, uh, application, you know, the the quality of their application and their plans, and then someone, some board selects who actually wins. Is that correct?
So as listed in the staff report, staff would assign a pass or fail to the applications, and as we listed in the presentation and staff reports, a pretty expensive process on what we were requiring for these applications, so staff was gonna review all these applications submitted. And if they received the pass, then they would be in the pool that would be presented to city council for them to select. And then from there commercial operators permits would be selected, and it would move on to uh the three that or four businesses that were going to be selected by council, and then the last step would be applied for the conditional use permit. So after the application window, staff was going to review those applications, pass or fail.
So, say hypothetically again all forty interested parties apply, say thirty pass, ten fail. Who's who's selecting the winner, city council, or is it narrowed down like to a shortlist and then another, and then another until there's one? Or is it city council is voting on all thirty simultaneously to pick the two winners, should this pass? I don't, I don't think that changes regardless of this, I'm just curious for the process, um, how, who picks it and are they voting it, you know, thirty at a time? Or is there a sliding scale or it just seems a bit odd to me?
Yeah, it's my understanding, if the pool is thirty, then council would select the three from that pool.
So they shortlist the three, and then they take a second vote to pick the the the, or actually, I guess if there's three, there's only gonna, all would get a permit under the current current uh ordinance, right? But if we vote yes tonight, then it would be down to two. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so essentially, there's a shortlist that could populate all the open slots either way, or perhaps there's an intermediate round? I I'm a little unclear, how how do you get down to the to the winner still? If you say it gets down to three, but currently there's four spots if we vote to reject this. Are you saying it goes to two if we vote to approve tonight, the shortlist?
Yeah, that's correct. Y- yes, and and so, um, part of the operators permit supplemental requirements includes a low, you know, a locate, indication of location. Um, so the city council, and you know, I think the city council would probably be looking at uh, you know, the location as well as the strength of the operator and their their track record. But they certainly, there could be other factors as well. And then, just a reminder too, that after they go through the operators permit process, there is a conditional use permit process as well, that would come before the planning commission and then go to city council, so there's a, there's a lot of um steps uh in this the way this process has been designed.
Let me put this way, who's scoring it to get to the city council vote of the final, final applicants? Is the city council making those votes to narrow it down, or someone else at the city recommending these four permits, pick two or?
Uh, other, so uh, other jurisdictions do have a uh, a you know, a staff level scoring process. Um, and and many jurisdictions, I, this may be a unique process in that, um, I don't believe there are other jurisdictions that have the operators permits go to the city council. Uh, they're either done by staff or or at a, at another level with a you know, perhaps a staff committee as well, uh, that scores the applications. You know, so, uh, but in this, in this case uh, the direction we were given was just to do a pass fail, um to make sure all of the the materials are submitted uh with the application that are required um as well as uh the applicant and their uh, the business partners, all passing their background checks uh through the police department, so um if if they pass both, you know, all the information that they've submitted, which is primarily everything on the checklist, which is what we would be looking for, um, you know, and also passing the background check, then that would constitute a passing you know, uh, grade or passing uh situation, and that would be moved, just moved on to city council without a, without a staff recommendation, so again, as LSAO mentioned, we would just basically be presenting, here are the third, twenty, thirty, whatever that are, that have passed, you know, it's you know, it's up to you to select, you know, one retail or one retail, one distribution or two distribution. And then they would move on to the to the uh use permit process.
Okay, thank you, so it sounds like city council could potentially have quite a bit of work on their plate evaluating, say, more than ten, ten of these, uh you know, they'd have to study them very carefully, would they be given any assistance on like economic projections of distribution versus retail?
Um, staff has not been directed to do that, we would probably just put together a you know, a spreadsheet, just, just so that they could track them and compare them just for, but without any um, you know, subjective um information that would, you know, favor one or the other, we, you know, staff would want to be very careful not to not to do that.
Got it. Okay, uh, that's all the questions I have. Uh, still last round. Any other questions or comments from the commission for staff? Mr. Lethen.
Yeah, just just quickly clarifying. Let's let's just pretend that we have thirty applications and they all go to a city council and they. They are looking at them and deciding and and they may look at each other and say, you know what? I don't like any of them. And there's no requirement that they actually fill these these vacancies. Am I correct that they could actually? Say no thank you to to all or any?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Uh, do we have, uh, I guess we go to public comments at this time? Questions, um. Yes, so uh if anyone from the public would like to. Speak for three minutes on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand in the zoom or. If you're on the telephone, you can dial nine or star nine and. You'll be led into speak. I see uh five people in the attendees list, couple of phone numbers and. Three names. So if you would like to speak, please again, use the feature. Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Give you twenty seconds. I would say, are you seeing anyone wanting to speak?
See no hands raised.
Through the chair. Uh, I will move to close public comment, seeing as we're not receiving any.
I'll second that. So uh, I don't think we, do we need to vote on this one if?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. Okay, let's do a vote to close public comment, please.
Chair Matt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Durazo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bia Soty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Koo.
I.
Commissioner Lethen.
I.
Seven zero motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'll just open up the floor for any general discussion by council. Uh, Mr. Harmon, go for it.
Uh. Unless anybody else would like to speak, I I have a motion to make. I do see a hand from.
Mr. Durazo, uh, anyone to speak?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Commissioner Harmon, thanks for pausing. I think I have a sense where you're going. Um. I just wanted to say, you know, I wanted to listen and I wanted to, I was hoping for public comment. Unfortunately, there wasn't any. Um, I watched the council meter and meeting on January tenth. I followed the process by which this made its way back to the council after the November election. Um, so I followed the progression quite a bit. I was especially interested in the dialogue that some of you were asking about tonight. The, you know, the downtown association and what was the fear and what was the rationale? There wasn't one. There wasn't a good one. It was full of assumptions and problematic language and innuendo, and I walked out of there thinking. I don't understand what the fear is. I've never seen a resolution that I disliked more than this one. Right? I know the council member, y'all know who he is, who requested this comeback to council for discussion. Said in his own words on January tenth, if it was up to me, there'd be no dispensaries, there'd be no cannabis. The resolution, the way it's written now allows for that. I don't think we need to make changes to it. The council can decide whether they want up to whatever amount, but they can decide that they can be none. So I I don't understand why we're entertaining this. I don't know why we're going in circles about around it. I've never seen one that was more literally more offensive than this one. So I I just want, I was waiting for public comment to say those things and I I just. And you know, we're talking about undermining the fiscal impact. Commissioner Koon, right, this is full of hypocrisy and contradictions. Um, and I'm absolutely opposed to it for those reasons.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Durazo. Anyone else before uh Christian Harmon? Go ahead, Commissioner Beasai.
So just to make sure I understand correctly, if we were to vote no and send this back. City council could on their own just say, we're only going to approve one. Um, retail cannabis place, right? So we're really kind of spinning our wheels here for no real good reason. I- am I correct, Michael, or or?
Yeah, yeah, says as uh was discussed, uh, when the operators permits come before them, they can, they can select. Uh, the operators uh under that, so this, this change would just limit the number that they can select. From the from the current ordinance, which allows for the three and one. And includes downtown and Tamfran.
You good, uh, Christian Beasai, or you have thought or?
No, he just said something. So we're removing Tanforin with this new ordinance, we're removing Tanfree. And we're also removing.
Downtown.
Downtown. That just struck me that that's a bigger issue than how many? Okay, now I I need to ponder that for a moment. I'm sorry.
Hey, anyone else before Commissioner Harmon? Christian Koo.
You know, I know we've, it's been some comment that, you know, we're going round and round. Is this really necessary? I I do want to point out, I think this is good. It's coming to us and and we can reaffirm through a yay or a nay that. You know, this is our expertise as planning commissioners is what we think is best for the city. So it it's not futile.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, uh, just to preempt Commissioner Harmon, uh, for the sake of simplicity, um, I would. Suggest perhaps motioning for a approval as is. That way, if you agree with it, we say yes, and if you disagree with it, you say no. So if you motion to approve it. And it gets seconded and you don't want to do this, we all vote no, and then it's crystal clear rather than the opposite way where it's kind of. A double negative or.
So through through the chair. To the the action that we were offered as recommended was to adopt a specific resolution. If you would like to move on that resolution so that we get a roll call on that resolution, that's fine. But my proposed alternative is to adopt a different resolution. I would like to move.
Okay.
That we that we adopt a resolution reiterating what we told them in August. That what we said in August was fine, the ordinance as it stands is fine. If anything, we would have added more locations. And that's what we think. They asked us our opinion and that's what we thought then. That's what I think we should say now.
Okay, question for staff. Do we have, are we able to make that vote? And but are we also required to vote on the issue at hand or the motion at hand? Does that require a yes, no, and then we could do a supplemental vote per Commissioner Harmon's or can we do? One of the one or the other.
I think you can do a um, you know, the motion can be to. To, you know, not recommend um amendments to the current ordinance. And that um your recommendation is to uh retain the existing. Uh, uh, ordinance um as you you recommended in August from last August.
I I would be more specific that what we recommended in August was to actually make the existing ordinance more permissive. We we recommended adding more locations to it at the time. And I, I would simply just send them another copy of what we sent them then.
If that language is acceptable to city staff, I'm more than happy to second it.
Yeah, yes, that would be fine.
Okay, well, um, I I will have a different approach just so. Um, it doesn't come back this way yet again. Uh, I would motion to approve it. Uh, for the sake of voting yes to approve it, sake of voting no to kick it back to the way it was before. So it's clear and no from this commission would be. No, keep it as is. So that that's my proposed motion. So we don't keep having this issue come back because of. You know, the the other way of saying no. So my, I would motion to take a vote to approve this motion.
So you you want to move to adopt the resolution that was proposed to give us?
So, just so we can do the vote, you can, you know, I'm not saying I'm voting yes or no. I'm just saying just to get it off our plates here and sent back either amended or keep it as is.
Chair Madden, I'm just a bit confused. Which resolution are you speaking to?
This the one that is in the packet.
Okay, the one in the staff report to staff. Okay.
Yeah, attachment one.
So do we have a second to either my motion or Commissioner Harmon's?
Uh, just to interject, I already seconded commission and heart commissioner Harmon's motion. So we had a motion, we had a second. And there was no.
There's no written.
Let me, let me finish my sentence here. So there's a motion and there was a second and there was no vote called on it and then you reintroduced another motion. So we just need to clarify what.
Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah.
Staff, are we allowed to do verbal motions? That's basically why I'm trying to avoid this. So it doesn't come back to us yet again.
Well.
Through the chair.
Oh, yes.
We we actually have to action on the motion that was proposed.
Correct, right, right, right. Yeah, you have to take, yes, you do have to take an action on the motion that was on the on the.
Could die, but we need to take action.
Yeah.
On Fisher Harmon's motion.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a real call vote on that.
In theory, I suppose Chair Madden could offer it as a hostile amendment, but but yeah, I mean, it's it's fundamentally like I don't. My understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, like there is no requirement that we. Take a motion either way on the resolution that was proposed like. You know, that was the recommended action was that we adopt this resolution, but we as a body can adopt whatever resolution is the consensus of the body. Or that that meets with the approval of a majority of the body.
Correct.
Okay, if that's within the rules, then I I don't see a problem doing that, but um I would still afterwards like to make a motion on the actual packet. If it doesn't get seconded, then it doesn't get voted on. Does that seem fair?
Sure.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote on Commissioner Harmon's uh. Um, proposal, if you want to repeat it one more time, since it's been.
My motion is to simply send them a copy of what we sent them in August. To say this was, this was the statement at the time, we stand by it, the, and they did adopt largely that thing and that's fine.
Right. Yeah, and I would just, you know, add to. Yeah, to to basically start the motion to not recommend uh changes to the existing ordinance.
Yes. And then we are, we are not endorsing the proposed changes.
Right.
Through the chair. I just want to say that there is no facts to substantiate the change. And and based on that, I I can't vote on something, there isn't any factual information. It's pro or con, it's just, it's just a new recommendation, new resolution.
Are you referring to Commissioner Harmon's proposal or?
No, to the one that's come forward to us.
Got it, okay.
Right, I second it.
Okay, well, oh, please.
Chair Madden.
No.
Vice Chair Durazo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bia Soty.
And this is Commissioner Harmon's motion, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Harmon.
I.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Koo.
I.
Commissioner Lethen.
I.
Six one motion passes.
Okay, so uh didn't see much point in going to vote the other way or I would. Have voted no not to pass it, but I wanted it in a written document, so we wouldn't have to deal with this coming back to us, but we'll go with this one.
I mean, through the chair, I think that, I mean, if you want to put the motion on the floor to also adopt the other resolution, it would be peculiar for a body to adopt. Two contradictory resolutions, but it's, you know, I mean.
Saying no is what I mean. So, so I I can recommend a vote of no on the, on this resolution and that could be seconded. And we can vote again, no, would that be sufficient? Michael?
It it's it's not necessary. Either approach would have been.
Okay, I'm just trying to button it on.
So yeah, I think it would be um at this point. Um, may may confuse the matter if we.
All right.
Do if we do two votes.
Understood.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the the position of the body is clear, I think.
Okay. So I think that closes that item. Uh, item seven on the agenda, looks like there's no item eight. Uh, so item nine is items from staff. Do we have uh? It's like an ARC selection. Michael.
Yes, and we do anticipate that this will be in person on the sixteenth. Uh, and uh, just in advance, uh, we are anticipating uh two new homes on San Marco. Um, that uh. Uh, Commissioner Biassodi would be conflicted with, so he gets the night off. Uh, but we do, uh, I have not, I've checked uh the conflict of interest maps and there are no other conflicts with that item. And it's the only one we have so far. Uh, so if anyone, so I'll, I'll look for three volunteers. So we have Harmon and Johnson. Um, uh, Rick, you cannot participate.
No, no, I was gonna ask. No, no, the curiosity is getting the best of me and I was just wondering if when you send out the packages, could you send one just to me? I won't participate or do anything. I just.
Uh, sure.
I would love to see what it looks like.
Yeah, there are two, there are two identical houses, both with um ADUs.
Okay.
Um, that are part of it. We actually were encouraging them to do an ADU and a JADU to get a total of six units. But they they uh are just doing two single family homes with ADUs.
Is this an SB nine lot split? Is that is that why?
No, no, these are two lots, two vacant lots that were part of a commercial business um. That was right out, that's right on the corner, I think, uh, right on the corner of San Marco and uh El Camino. Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, Michael, I also, I own property on Santa Inez.
Yes.
Sure how close that is?
Yeah, uh, I I checked the map today and uh it's outside of the one, just outside of the one thousand foot radius, so.
That was close.
For you, yeah.
Because I'm very close to Rick.
So, okay, so we have uh Commissioners Harvard and Johnson and uh one additional.
What's the date again, Will?
Uh, let's see, I believe it's the uh sixteenth. Thursday the sixteenth. And that would be in person.
Ooh, I can volunteer.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, great. Uh, moving on, item ten is comments from members. Do you have any comments from members? Uh, not seeing any hands, so I guess we did not. Uh, so moving on to last item is adjournment. So our next regularly held meeting will be on March twenty first. Twenty twenty three, seven P M, in person at the senior center, correct, Michael?
That is correct.
All right, it'll be great to see everybody together. It'll be my very first commission meeting in person. I have always been pandemic, uh, Commissioner. Now I will be uh. In person Commissioner for the first time.
We need to, we need to bring him a gavel.
I do have a gavel.
All right, everybody, uh, thank you so much. Uh, we will see you uh soon.
Hey, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, good night. All right, good night.